Because we've had those issues too, where somebody else got fraud of their card and it shut down the whole sheriff's office's cards and people have been at trainings and all of a sudden you can't cover, you can't put a thousand dollars worth of room for a week on your card because they got shut down and some people, they can't swing that on their own personal card or anything like that either.
But I do think our cards, the majority of our cards are right across the street. And heading up and saying, this is what we're doing for Wakeover and this is what having that limit brought up.
Uh, I don't know if they can do that. I forgot. We've ran into some of those before trying to get a bomb bomb card, but they won't do certain, we've ran into some of those issues because we've had multiple people out to different trainings going all over the place. I mean, we've had three employees out to different trainings in different areas and they all need cards and they all have their own.
What you just said, you had issues?
We have had issues. That's why everybody has their own card issue.
You had issues before everybody had a card or have you still had issues when you bought cards?
We had issues before everybody had a card, just like, so if you have one card and it gets shut down, you have that issue of nobody out has that card. That's why each one, that's why we have a card for every individual.
Okay, cool. Let this, we've done this.
And they make them? They don't do the limit or anything like that here at this bank? We're not enjoying that. We've tried multiple times to discuss stuff like that. They made the cards, they don't monitor all of that stuff here at this bank.
When I was a kid traveling around the store, coach carried a voucher or some sort of thing when we stayed the night at someplace. I guess I don't understand that. Did you have to find a hotel or would it?
Take a voucher?
Take a voucher.
Exactly. And you always had to find a restaurant to take a voucher. So sometimes you took a trip all the way around the town. I would take a school voucher. I mean, that's an interesting way of doing it. Yeah, so hush it. Just do it right now.
You know how many years ago?
Eh, you too. Hush it too. You both can sit in the corner and you know.
He's not on record.
Whatever.
Yeah, but still, I mean.
I'd like to see you own book or roll with a voucher.
I have. I have. Little America was really good at that.
Yeah, I was thinking somewhere in Cheyenne, they're allowed to take all sorts of vouchers. You'd think if you're gonna have full size of people down there for multiple nights, will you take a voucher? Sure. Okay, if you don't, I'm gonna go do my business elsewhere.
Well, something's gonna happen.
Well, look, these motels aren't all the pop motels anymore. Chains or.
Corporate.
Corporate or somebody.
I'm staying.
You fifth ranger downtown Cheyenne, I don't care.
I wish I wouldn't ate all these. You need something sweet.
They're hot and spicy, sorry.
I think that's one I got. Is it true?
Thank you.
So that number 11.
Oh.
So we have that. I saw voucher today that was toys or something for public health, I think. But that's usable materials, right?
Mr. Chairman.
Why not? My hands want to.
Well, your wife and you're a little bigger.
I know.
Um, part of the issue that you run into that too, and we've run into that on several occasions, is that's grant money. If you accepted the grant, then you accepted what the grant would buy. And so if we're gonna buy, you know, um, public health, whatever, we accepted that grant and that's coming out of that grant, then you'll pay for that with that grant. If it's toys, if it's condoms, if it's birth control, if it's whatever, whatever our feelings on it is, we kind of, we should add that discussion before we accepted the grant.
The toilet paper off of Amazon is where we draw the, we draw a line, right? Like, yeah, I've seen that before.
The one that I'm having to move, the one that's very interesting to me is why we're buying, we're getting a voucher for supplies or something and then the voucher is not going back to the original buyer, it's going to another account. That bothers me. I don't understand. It's extension office. We pay, they buy something, we're paying a voucher for what they bought, where that voucher is not paying the vendor, it's paying another account. That doesn't make sense.
Wait over here.
Yeah, we're over skeet now. So a lot of that discussion. I do think, Mr. Chairman, on 11, there should be something in there. And if you don't get it, you buy it. You don't get pre-authorization to buy it. It could get expensive for people.
All right, moving on to new business. Discussion was had briefly about moving Gilbert under the commissioners. Thoughts?
I gave my thoughts last week.
I read Gilbert's thoughts. He's not in favor of that. You tell me why. Number one, I was gonna love the sheriff just talking. Yeah, sometimes that might be wise. We're probably here today. Oh, I don't think it's been an issue. I think it's been going pretty good. I mean, there's hiccups and I understand you guys are getting the information you need. But strangely enough, nobody asked me. I mean, I know what he, at least I know what the newspaper said he said. I'll give you that. But nobody's ever reached out to me. And there was a time when you guys were involved in all of those things. I think it was Chairman Lampert that said, you know, we really don't need to be fully aware of the plans and this and that. We just need to know what's happening. So it has backed off as far as what you guys are getting informed on, but by all means, don't be afraid to ask. Cause I can help describe some of that stuff too, especially in the plans and stuff. And that's, there's a lot to those. But remember, they're a plan. They're not set in concrete. Those plans are designed for when you have some major issue, let's call it a fire or something, and you gotta do some mitigation stuff. Sometimes you lose communication. Sometimes maybe a command hasn't been set up. This is the guideline where everybody gets started on things for those plans. But there's other plans in there too. I mean, we've got plans for active shooter, reunification, things like that. There's some of those that are maybe, I wouldn't say classified, but they're sensitive. I'll get to be careful on that. I guess, what questions do you have for me? Because I think it's working pretty good under emergency. I think, I've always thought it should be under emergency services of some sort. I don't know that it used to be under the sheriff, but that's the trend around the state.
I think one of the things that came up, Brian, as far as this goes, you know, Garrett and I have been here for three years. That's not very long in this position. We're just starting to get our feet on the ground and understand more. But honestly, you know, if there was a catastrophe, say, and the only ones that could get to the court, well, I don't even know where we're supposed to go. But if the only people that could get to where we were supposed to go would be Garrett and I, you know, I'm, I don't wanna speak for Garrett, but I can speak for myself. I don't know what I was supposed to do. I have, I have no idea.
Right, that's why you haven't.
And I understand we don't have to have, we don't have to sit down and know all the minute details, but I think, not just now, but probably every four years when you have commissioners, even if they're missionaries of any report or refresher, we should have some kind of training. So we know what we're, we have big responsibilities here that we don't even know what they are.
Right. So WOES or Lightning Officer Homeland Security provides free training for commissioners, city councilmen, us, a lot of us with base, we can, we can have them come here for free if you would like that. I mean, because there is, and there's different roles. There's roles you guys play that, that most maybe don't understand. During a couple incidents over the years, one was a fire and one was, two of them were escapes. We set up incident command down there and because there was a potential for a fiduciary, immediate fiduciary issue, we had commissioner in the incident command for that whole time. I believe it was, I mean, not for the whole time, they rotated out, but I think we had, and answer phones, to be honest with you, because that's a good, that's a good job for you folks too, is, you know, understanding what the people, what the complaints are, what's going on and so on and so forth. But I think this was a while back and I remember more than one occasion, Tracy Hunt volunteered to come in and set that command and watched the process happen. And pretty soon he was, you know, stuff was flying and he was doing his thing. Tom Bruce, there was, there's been a few.
I went down there for the fire.
Yeah, you were there for the fire, that's right. Matter of fact, we traveled over to the incident command and we're there every morning for briefing. So yeah, there's, there's, there's definitely a place for the commissioners in those scenarios. And I, I'm not gonna, well, I will speak for Gilbert. He can provide some of that training. But the really good training we can get from WOES is that, and it doesn't cost me, we can already pay for it. Don't be afraid to utilize it. And we can work on that, that's no problem.
And I have no problem coming in once a month or once a quarter and letting you guys know what I'm doing and then what's going on or what I put grants in or.
After reading the Upton's paper, I'll be here with you. But yes, yes, I have a problem.
And doing that kind of stuff, there's no reason to move me out from the sheriff.
I think there's, there's so many things that come up at a pretty consistent level. It's pretty nice for him to have somebody that, and it's not just me, it's Danny with his mail, it's others, but a supervisor that's available on a regular basis. And I'll be honest with you, it's, it's just as important for me to have the ability to deploy him wherever. So that's been super huge. And it might be anywhere from literally just getting on Facebook and putting information, pushing information out, or it might be literally being my quasi incident commander on the incident. Cause one of the things we run into in the small counties, you have that whole incident command structure and all this stuff you're supposed to do. It's literally almost impossible to do that in this county because you just don't have the manpower. The manpower you do have is working that stuff. Gilbert has filled that role for, for fire, for the PD, for sheriff's office, many occasions. So that, you know, having the ability to work with him like that at that level is pretty handy.
So tell me why during this bomb fiasco that we had, why it was none of our incident command people got in.
Yeah, I'll be glad to. So I will, I will be glad to. So our dispatch got a call from a highway patrolman stating that there is potentially an explosive device at the port of entry. They've got it taken care of, or not port of entry, DOT building, and they've got it taken care of. So the lame spidey senses were going off, maybe there's some explosive device and so on and so forth. So I actually worked closely with the chief of police and I sent him down there. And I'll tell you, I tell you how I believe this happened. I believe, well, and I probably got evidence to prove this. The supervisor at the DOT building had an employee bring a pipe bomb into the facility, set it on his desk. Another individual there did, that was good friends with this trooper, said this is gonna look really bad, so I'll call my friend, the trooper, and have him take care of this. So that's what happened. That trooper tried to cover it up a little bit. We got wise to it pretty quick. Between the chief and I, I sent our guys out to set up traffic and do those kind of things. The patrol came into town, the, I think it was the sergeant came into town. Derek and I, the police chief and I talked a little bit about it. Let's find out what his intentions are, what he's gonna do. So he, his intentions, well, we'll, we'll, we'll take care of this. We'll investigate it. We're knowing what they're doing. My thought was, okay, let's see how they like this animal. We're, we've got it contained locally, but let's see how they like this animal. And what, 20 minutes later, the sergeant's called us, oh, I think we need, we need you guys to take this over because you have to investigate that. You have to, you have to do a lot of things. So there's a backstory to this too. The new colonel that came in for the highway patrol was running around there wanting to start up SWAT teams, they wanted to start up bomb squads, they wanted to start up all this, these state police kind of issues. So WASCOT, the Lightning Associate Sheriff's and Chiefs of Police and Sheriff's Association called him out on that. He claims he's not doing that. He's not gonna do this. He's, you know, we're not gonna have SWAT teams. We're not gonna have bomb squads. You know, we're, when we do, we just want them there to assist you. Well, the state's already set it up in regions for, especially for explosives. How many regions are there for? Six, six. And for an agency, federal law doesn't even allow for just an agency to win and become a bomb squad. There's ATF issues because you got, for training purposes and so on and so forth, you gotta carry around explosives and so on and so forth. So we've got these six regions and they're made up of sheriff's offices. Most of them are made up of joint task force type scenarios. So I think initially the colonel kind of passed that down through his troops because that particular trooper that was in here was pretty excited about starting up, hoping to start up a bomb squad. Region, what region are we?
We're region one.
Region one bomb squad said that will be impossible because of those federal rules and so on and so forth. So we let them swim in their ship for a little bit and we took over.
Yeah, we have it.
It was really frustrating.
It was.
Cause we weren't allowed and I wasn't even allowed to do my job.
Right.
Well, you were allowed. You just didn't know what was going on then. But once we had a handle on what was going on, we let them smoke in it for a little bit and then we took over.
I find it interesting.
Well, you were allowed. You just didn't know what was going on then. But once we had a handle on what was going on, we let them smoke in it for a little bit and then we took over.
I find it interesting. The millions and millions and millions of dollars pumped into Homeland Security for these very situations and then you're just brushed off and not even allowed to do what your intention is.
So first of all, the allowed part, oh, we're allowed. We could've took that over, the chief of police could've taken that over in close seconds. We had that contained for the moment. I wanted to let them swim in their ship for a minute and realize they can't take on, you know, high patrol doesn't have manpower to take on investigation like that. Not that, and then here's the other side of it, right? We already had a suspect in mind. Highway patrol would have no freaking idea who the potential suspects even are here. Okay. So there's a lot to that. They let us in pretty quick. And I'll say the lieutenant was, when he got here, it was pretty clear that that was maybe not correct. But I'll tell you what, that mess up started with our local DOT there at the shop. The civilian personnel contacted a friend, in my opinion, to cover up what was, could have been a shit show and it didn't work out that way. Couldn't keep the lid on. But that's an example and it's interesting in the timing because that tells me what the colonel was pushing for, what we, as sheriffs called him out on. You were there at that meeting, right? You remember? He, he, you could, so this guy's from back east and they have state police is there, you know, that have a lot more authority than our highway patrol does. Outside those bar lane ditches, they don't, you know, state highways and interstate, they don't have, I mean, they've got full law enforcement authority, but they don't have statutory authority to dive into their own stuff without notifying myself or the, same with like Department of Criminal Investigation. You can, local agency has to request them to do most things with the exception of some drug crimes and sex crimes that they were. So I think, I think that's, there's some differences there, but I think that's where that mentality comes from. It was, so I wanted to let it play out just a little bit. We had it contained. That wasn't the issue. But I mean, obviously it's not rocket science. You take an explosive device from a gravel pit that's, where we would take an explosive device to destroy it or set it off and bring it into tunnels. Yeah, I can't even scrap that level. But anyway, so that's how that worked. Yeah, it was very frustrating because we, Gilbert called the off, the, the duty officer down there at WOES and he had no freaking idea what was going on either. And so happened, the assistant colonel was gonna build a captain, a captain from the.
Yeah, captain from the highway patrol's in the building. So that guy walks out there, talks to him and the captain from Cheyenne of the highway patrol had no idea what they were up there.
And to get the bomb squad over, it has that team for, it's supposed to go through emergency management. Emergency management is supposed to call Homeland Security and get the authorization from the.
That's how you get it for free. Yeah. So call it for free. Otherwise you pay for it. So that's supposed to be the proper protocol.
Anyways, I do have a training that I emailed the commissioner chair and the vice chair, offering from the World Domestic Preparedness Consortium, that's free, that we could bring into a workshop. I do apologize for my negativity that I've had and I, we talked about that after the last meeting.
You and I talked about that yesterday, right?
Yep. And so, and I explained that in my email to you guys. And so I do apologize to board for my negativity that I've had. And we, we talked about that. So, but there is training out there. We can do that. But I'm plump happy under the sheriff and it works well. Being in their right hand pocket and being in Daniel's right hand pocket all the time and, you know, that's where I feel, like you said, with all emergency management, I think should be under some kind of, some kind of emergency.
Services of some sort.
Or law enforcement. And that's kind of where it's been, there's very few left on the commissioners under the state, in the state anyways. There's some under fire services, but most are under the sheriff anymore. I think only one under fire. Campbell County just went under fire. Daytona County is under fire. So, but, cause that's who we work with and that's who, if disaster strikes or hits or there's an emergency, that's where I'm gonna be. And that's who I'm gonna be working with and trying to protect and help along with the public and trying to get resources for them. And then thing I need to do better is communicate with you guys and communicate with the commissioners.
And when that doesn't happen, just like you go into a restaurant and the service sucks and you wanna talk to the manager, that's typically the protocol. By all means, call me your damn 24/7.
How many in the state are part-time?
Um, there is a few. Um, I'm not sure the total number, but there are a few.
Four, I think, last I saw.
Yep.
And one of those part-time emergency managers is a separate emergency manager from the county. It's a municipal emergency manager. But that's a part-time position.
Okay, Mr. Chair. Is that Gilbert's feeling on the structure right now, is that mutual on your guys' side as well?
Yeah, I believe so. It flows better.
You know, our, our job here is making sure that you guys got the funds to do whatever. This is not gonna be a very popular subject I'm gonna bring up. You know, and this relates back to the credit card policy. We had a itemized receipt for a DoorDash of a Mountain Dew from Walgreens on Gilbert's credit card. Can anybody justify that?
Were we yet? Probably at a conference, something. Again, let me know if something.
But yeah, I mean, that's, that's something you shouldn't, do you look at the credit card bills and stuff?
We, and I do. I mean, I missed it. I mean, I'm sure even with five of you looking to something gets missed here and there. I mean, but yes, I do.
There's a lot of little things like that, but that one just stood up and smacked me. You know, DoorDash, a Mountain Dew from Walgreens.
So I probably ordered a meal, forgot to order a drink and, and I don't, when I go out to conferences, I never leave my room. And I should probably should have.
Walk down to the lobby.
Yeah.
Every, pretty much every motel's got a.
If I had cash on me, which I may not have. Yeah.
That, that didn't set very well for me at all.
Yeah, no, it doesn't with me either. So if, when little thing, and that would be with one of my, you know, other employees too. You know, if you see something that I don't see, I look at a lot of that stuff and I miss things. I catch things too.
There's, and do you monitor any social media?
Yes.
Well, this was a couple of months ago. There was a thread going on on social media and an individual made a comment that, you know, Gilbert, you don't have enough common, you have too much common sense to be a city council member. The response right back was in, I don't know, I got, I got photoshopped or screenshot to me. His response right back was, or a county commissioner. Said, so you're, you, you have too much common sense to be a county commissioner? That's what that, that's what that Facebook thread led to.
Absolutely.
And that really don't set good with me. You know, when you DoorDash a Mountain Dew, common sense, that scale tipped off, it tipped off the road.
And I can understand that. But you know, it's certain things you get frustrated and sometimes I stick my foot in my mouth and I don't deny that.
But it's your public, you're out in the public. You know what happened if I said something like that? Newspaper have it all over the place.
Well, I'm gonna refrain from, pardon, something there.
I guess one of the issues that we had too is, those plans are important. They're important to the county, the citizens of this county. You and I had that discussion, but to have them just plop down and say, sign them, I wanted, we need a review. And then the pushback of, you don't need a review. Well, I'm not asking for detailed information. I just want the world, the county to be comfortable of what's going on. And that's, that was one of the issues too, is we just, the communication has to be better.
And I'm okay with that.
Didn't have any idea, you know? So that's part of it. And then when's the last evaluation you did for him?
He's never had an evaluation, formal evaluation.
So that runs us into a problem too. And that's why we put those, those memos out. Hopefully we put those. But we need to have evaluations because we're going through an issue right now of unemployment.
Right. And understand, we've been doing evaluations for quite some time, but we've been tweaking quite a bit on the evaluations. They've stayed somewhat in-house and that's on me. It hasn't reached out to him. I mean, he's, he's one of the few employees I got that I can, I can get on and, and he straightens some things out. But no, that one's on me.
And then it becomes on us.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's one of the discussions then. And I did it for the discussion purposes. Your other commissioners were correct in saying you need to be talked to. I dropped it.
I appreciate that.
And I dropped it quickly to have that discussion. And I dropped it quickly to have that discussion. And that's how we sometimes the ball gets wrong. So I probably will continue to have this discussion.
I had a member of the community call me yesterday. I haven't read the newspaper yet, but whatever it is, it is. But he was quite livid about the thought that there's this ideology that maybe 20% of what was in those plans, the the community doesn't need to know or whatever the thought process is there. Because I dealt through them, if there was a half a percent. I mean, that that stuff is public knowledge and it needs to be. And I think it probably does better service to the public that it was brought forward, you know? And you came and helped bring some of that forward at the last meeting, which was what I think needs to happen.
You know, and.
People don't know what you do and they see you just driving around or whatever, you know?
The other the other part of that is is when we're putting those plans together, the go-up to LEPC meetings, the chair, Daniel, all of that. By all means, we'll include you in the development of those plans in the future. It's an email. This is the plan. Get your feedback back. And so a lot of times it's. There's always going to be typos on a lot of information. So. No reason why we can't push those up to you guys when we develop those.
Well, and I think we got.
We used to.
Yeah, you can get a funny ad one that says Creek County. Last time I checked, Creek County doesn't have a refinery. They don't have a railroad.
Well, you know, but those things happen, right? I I got it. The deal for the 4% or the 1% tax that tells search and rescue, they will provide ambulance service for up. I mean, it happens. So you you catch it, you fix it, you move on.
What's the so the TV showed up in front of us again? What's going on there?
It's it's a monitor. It's basically, yeah. And it's a replacement to the one that's down or that that we can't get fixed.
So that's news to me. I don't remember hearing of one down.
So the one that I had like that.
Yeah.
Is broke.
Broke.
It's got a the bottom left.
Top right.
Top left. Top left quarter doesn't work. Costs more to refix it than you could have bought another one of those for.
Understandable, but so nobody here knew, I think that I'm aware of, that I think it just kept coming across.
Well, I think we were budgeted for it, so I didn't, you know, I no offense, I don't, when I have a monitor go down on one of my computers, I'm budgeted for it.
Yeah, but it doesn't say monitor in that. I mean, it looks like a new TV.
It's not a TV. It's a monitor. It's not even, it won't do anything like what that thing can do. We went from a $10,000 smartboard to a $600 monitor. That's about that size, maybe a little bigger.
Along the vouchers come across as 65-inch commercial TV.
I don't know how it did that because we got the same monitor. We purchased those through that company when we did the redid the cameras.
That's what the vouchers are.
So that my TV. So we denied it again. That's why because I'm like, what the heck is this TV?
Yeah, it's it's she go downstairs and it's always, you know, the one that's always been up on the wall there. I think right now it's displaying the cameras. But we in the instant command scenario, we use it all the time. Plug your laptop into it, do your mapping on it. It just gives and we do trainings on it, but the one thing we really use it for is the Zoom calls conference, you know, what do we call it? Zoom meetings.
Are trees in this one?
No, we've already been down that road with those and we're not. I mean, you know, realistically, you think of what a laptop can do and you get the smartboard. I think those things were pretty close to $10,000 a piece. You can just plug your laptop into a monitor that's that size and do everything and more. And 600 bucks versus.
This thing's kind of a joke.
Well, they are. They're annoying anyway.
So now that I know that, that helps. Now that the board comes in.
I guess one of the other things and I want to publicly, I did already want to do it while you're sitting here, is thankful for the website. That it got upgraded. Two years was a long time. And I know what your reasonings were, but there are enough people and I've had enough people say that they'd like to be able to look and see the website. So I think that was one of our wondering why it never got updated. I I heard the reasons, but still, that's one of those observations that we have from the people. And we get that feedback.
No, I think it's good that you the other the other meetings was beneficial for, I think, for the public's view and mine. I mean, people then now have an understanding what you're.
And I came into a negative and I apologized for that. It just that I've in six years, that's that's never been asked that before. And I have no problem and I will do it every time you guys want. Any explanation on those plans and when we go to do it again? I used to send a mouse saying, here, I'm updating plans. Give me feedback. And I've never heard a peep, so I quit doing it. So but I have no problem sending that out.
Yeah, and part of that's my fault. I mean, if you if you guys aren't putting feedback in typically, that kind of goes to the wayside. And the people that are putting the feedback in, you know, like the LEPC committee and and we'll make sure that doesn't happen. If you don't want to put feedback, that's fine for you. I know there's one in here for sure that will.
Just another little pushback too, though. But remember you had COVID. You had two years of COVID. And that was going to be a struggle for anybody to come up here and do any of that. That was.
Absolutely.
So throwing out six years is not really fair because we were we weren't even meeting in public. I mean, we'd get one person in here to run the phone and everybody else was zoomed.
Well, it's still email. You can still check your email and.
Yeah, we push those up through email because.
Of course, you can't.
You wouldn't be able to sit in, I mean, you could have discussions on items in here, but individually, it takes it takes hours to go through those plans.
Well, I we had that discussion.
Yeah, we push those up through email because you can't. You wouldn't be able to sit in, I mean, you could have discussions on items in here, but individually, it takes it takes hours to go through those plans.
Well, I we had that discussion.
You know, those those plans, the 3,000-foot overview, that's what what we like and that's what the public wants to see.
Well, and we do that. And I would suggest at least once. And it's a lot because I I'll be honest, I don't even get through all of them because it's a lot. But as as a commissioner for that 30,000-foot over, maybe come down to about 3,000 feet and just kind of skim through them. And then in the future, as they come back, you you already know what they say, look for the changes and, you know? Or you kind of already know what they say and maybe something didn't work the way you thought it should. And you make those suggestions to add to or take away from. And remember, they're 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 set for a guide. They're not set in stone, you know? I won't I will not put anything that well. You can't put anything out there that's set in stone, especially in these communities like this because you think you got all those plans in place. And I guarantee, especially in Weston County, something will come up that fits between the plans but doesn't fit any of them.
Well, we hope we never have to use one of the plans.
But the nice thing is, is if you kind of understand them at at the commissioner level and at Daniel's level and my level, the intersheriff's level, detention's level, that when those things happen, you kind of know what it's going to look like, especially initially, right? Because sometimes the communication is is horrid, don't know the full scale of what's going on. But we can, you know, those each individuals kind of know what the plan is. We get started, we can surely divert, you know, as time goes on. But yeah, it's a lot. I get that. I would recommend at least skimming through them fairly good, especially the ones that would have economically impact on Weston County because.
We had we had a pretty good discussion about that.
It took a lot of tries to get through and read them.
I had mine pretty marked up.
Yeah.
So my recommendation, I guess, would be at the next meeting. If there's time, we schedule Gilbert for an hour after the meeting and we do a little workshop of roles, you know, as your understanding of it is and helping us and Vera's saying, you know? I have a little bit of a grasp of it, but I I'm lacking a lot of it too. So.
I would I would love to do that.
That'd be great.
Because, I mean, it's having an interest in in that is fantastic. Yeah, and I'll tell you one of Gilbert's frustrations, maybe he said it already, is just that. It's he pushes a lot of work out there for people to review and look at, think about, and to include his own boss, sometimes he gets nothing back, you know? It's like, well, shit. And it's like, well, I will get on that, you know, and look at it. So I I not condoning the frustration, but you know.
I was I was just going to say something on those lines. I know I know that you try to get us involved in things. And I've been to a couple of them and I was the only one there. So I I get that I get that part of your frustration because you you do try to get us involved and and I learned a lot when I went, by the way.
Thank you.
And, you know, Ed Ed came down during COVID and said, hey, you guys do a great job. I appreciate where you're going. And that meant a lot. When we were running running the ELC, me and Lori at the time. That meant a lot to Lori and I. So things like that go a long ways. From my point of view. And I apologize for my comment on Facebook. I was during budget time and all that stuff and I was frustrated. And like I said, I apologize. I stick my foot in my mouth. Not going towards this. It's just, I get I get what you called. I don't know. Yeah. I just dumb sometimes.
And I'm kind of opposite, like Vera. You know, I've been on the fire and with that, a lot of the stuff I take for granted that that I kind of know, you know, being in the situation, it's like, yeah, I just come through a lot of that stuff where these guys haven't been involved in that stuff.
And and you bring a great point there because it's just like law enforcement, unless you've kind of had those boots on for whatever, it's it's yeah, you don't grasp some of the intricacies of that.
Even on the fire side, we with the law enforcement side, working together. It's just stuff that I take for granted that I shouldn't.
We do it too.
Marty?
You know, in body language, rubbing your nose has a significant. I don't know what it is, but nonetheless. The other thing that we're having to struggle with and I think we need some help is those grants. We can't have a year and a half grant to help.
So I went through all those, me and Suzie went through those and we found $3,456.
Left or paid?
That was not, that was unaccounted for.
So you got all the way down to $3,000?
That was it. That was all that was not submitted for.
Okay, good to know.
That was it. And that was my bad, my fault that I missed. And that has been put in for a draw. So when the auditor came, he found another $6,000 and some that was put in and check was written for that the state has not paid because it's a it has it's on hold because of the government stuff. But everything else, all that other money she was talking about, I have no idea. It was it was just the check was written, the drawdown's been done, and we were just waiting on the state to reimburse it. So that 70, 50, 77,000 dollars was just waiting on the state to reimburse it. All my stuff was done. The drawdowns were done, the checks were written, all that was done. The only thing I hadn't done was $3,456, I think.
So are we still $72,000 in the hole?
No, you'd better not be.
Okay, so.
So and she did tell me she got a check in for 50-something, one of the ones, the big ones, that was waiting on the state. So the only one that I was missing was doing was over the $3,500 basically. So. And that's that's the nature of the beast, I think, when it comes to the state and drawdowns.
But I I I think part of that issue though is when we bring it up, that the follow-through.
Yep, and I called her and and we went through each one of my 515 numbers. And I double-checked and we make sure and I want to make sure that I have everything done. We found one for like $3,500.
So I'm going to put this out again. Before budget time, which is in general in May or something, you come in and we talk about the grants that are going to come through.
That'd be great.
We have that. You come in, if we have an issue, you you say, may I be on your agenda, please? I want to talk about this. And so that we have this understanding of where our match money is going to be, where, how we're going to, and we can have that conversation.
So like the MPG covers half my wages and half the money I spend. So if that's a grant money that spends spends part of my money, my benefits, my wages and my whatever I spend out of my working money. But yeah, and I remember like my first or second year, I used to come in and we'd just talk like that and that's never happened since.
Every time you have one come across the table.
So plan an hour or three, something to give in front of us. If you guys don't mind, if the board's okay with that, I assume we would be.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like I would just like to put this out here that I'm glad we had this discussion. It's a good one, Kat. I would like to revisit it. I'd like to see how things work out.
Well, I I understand. I don't think it's a dead horse. I mean, things improve. I see no reason to keep it status quo. Let's get it.
Thank you guys for.
That's why you love Ted, you know?
I get those daily.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Anything else I guess I should have asked? Anybody got anything else on the sheriff's department or? So Drew, this has to be in lead Monday, right? It's the letter to the Bureau of Land Management, Rescission of Conservation and Landscape Health. It's the deal that we instructed her to do for us at the last meeting.
Is that your special meeting?
No, special meeting is one to sign that.
Yeah, she talked about this last.
Yeah, she talked about this or.
Last meeting.
Yeah, she was under the crunch to get it done. So we had to give her basically the go-ahead to.
Work on it.
Work on it. I produced her. It's pretty much cut and paste, I think, is what it is. She's developed it.
About the third paragraph on Karen was.
And she does such a good job on taking our land use plan and integrating with this stuff.
And I think there's four or five different counties she's created for.
That was a lot.
See ya.
Thank you, guys.
See ya.
I think you I think Michael should have to send his tax real collections with us.
Hundred and something, whatever. Yeah.
Hundred and thirteen. He's running that.
It doesn't have a place for you to sign.
Yeah, it's in the back. There's not an underline, but there is my name.
Oh, right there. There's a blank spot. We have to approve the chairman's signature on. The Bureau of Land Management, Rescission of Conservation and Landscape Health Rule.
Second.
Properly seconded for signature on the whatever. You know, landscape health rule. The discussion.
Yeah, give us an overview. What it's all about.
Started speaking.
It's health landscape. Just like the title said.
I can read it while you do the tax. I can read it out loud while we all do the taxes.
Might give us to give us the sign.
Oh, man, we'd all be asleep, I think.
Any other discussions other than? All in favor that Marty did and Vera seconded. Any other discussions other than all in favor, Marty did, and Vera seconded. All those in favor of the chairman's signature on the aforementioned document, please say aye.
What's the number of?
Seven, four, five, zero, three.
One, two, three.
This is the monitor.
Second.
Your voice says TV.
Moved and properly segmented to approve voucher seven, four, five, zero, three for online security. Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, what?
Post.
All right, let's stack again.
Yes. Sixty-five inch commercial TV.
So I sent this to everybody.
Oh, you did, oh, thanks.
This is the email person, right? Everybody done? See you. Did you guys see it, Vera?
I don't think I saw it because I didn't look at the email.
If you're interested, there's the explanation.
Yeah, we'll leave it like that.
See it.
The explanation for all. So.
No, because I'm gonna send it.
Five, please.
Still asking.
It was on the, it was, it is, I put it on the one, six, nine, seven, three, one, eight, one, nine.
Was it mobile phones?
Let's go to read that letter. Only a claw hand after that.
Is this Michael's water?
Bring my stamp.
For real? Where's my stamp? Okay, bring your hands.
Yeah, here's mine and Tony's. We got it.
I tell you what, my hand was round.
You're in it for the fun?
Yeah, I love folklore and storytelling and, for me, Halloween is, we celebrate it, we do the costumes, and I love to watch horror movies and eat garbage. And I don't, you know, take my kids candy. But you know, I, I've heard it said that, you know, sometimes horror movies, ghosts, monsters are really just, you know, what, metaphors for the other things we're really afraid of but can't address directly. Maybe it's healthy to get this out of our system. As a, as a kid, if I heard a bump in the night, I'd be terrified. As an adult, if I hear a bump in the night, I'm terrified. It's the furnace and I have to pay for it. You know, maybe they're, maybe it was fun sometimes to be afraid of things that in most cases couldn't really hurt you instead of worrying about debt or child abduction or, you know, cancer or something that really is a threat. It's fun to be afraid of things that can't really hurt you.
So Becky called me during lunch and we never figured out an account to pull the thousand dollars out of. And I said, I don't have financial admin, so if that's okay with the board, we need to approve that on this.
Well, if I really wanted to make them grumpy, I'd take it out of that one. Why not? They're not supposed to.
Airport operations. Make a motion. If you're interested in making a motion to do that out of financial admin, then we can probably move forward. Otherwise, you're gonna have to change.
Second.
Discussion.
I wondered what's the motion, they're not holding on it.
Sorry for my lack of thinking that we needed to do that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. So now we have resolution twenty-five, twenty-six, where we are, therefore be resolved by anybody in Weston County. Twenty-five, twenty-six county budget be amended by moving one thousand dollars into law enforcement twenty-four-seven sobriety program from account financial admin. So the money that came in, is that going into that account as well? I'm confused.
It shouldn't go.
It should be in the collection.
But I thought, the word kept being used, collection, but as they draw.
So that's where I was confused, just why the thousand dollars was going in there because you read the, the grant that they get sent us, and it has to go into that account, and then they spend out of that account.
The only issue is, is that there was this time lapse, and then they get really snotty with that. So we can take that thousand dollars back out. I mean, whenever.
Well, we gotta remember, we started it with a thousand dollars, so if it gets like four thousand dollars, we can pull the thousand back out and put it back in.
But we.
What is that?
It's the resolution.
Oh, I'll do that.
Tried to sneak it in.
Yeah, you're trying to pull one on me.
Because he was pretty adamant that it was gonna grow.
Yeah, they didn't want to have that actually. And I think that's what it specifically said in.
But my, my jumpstart, it gets us not have to do budget amendment.
Every time we turn around.
Yep. So then like next year, at the end of the year, there's twenty-eight hundred dollars in there. That's what we take in budget for the next year.
So, and we won't have to do anything when they bring money in because it's gonna be all collections. So we don't have to do anything.
So we have accepted.
Yeah, we don't have to do budget here in unanticipated funds.
We need to discuss this.
There's weird stuff.
Oh, shoot, the fairgrounds. We were gonna put that in for Title twenty-five, and when we didn't take it off, we didn't. I guess, I don't think I'm gonna be able to.
What are we doing?
Okay, the fairgrounds. I tried several different numbers, reaching out to Progressive to try to figure out what the heck's going on, so if they can get that, that wall sealed up. Because now we're exchanging cold air with the inside. Not good with the bathroom there. And nobody will give me a straight answer. So Becky and I reached out to our insurance guy. And he said, actually, she reached out to, only one that reached out back and said they would do it for X price was like eighteen thousand with lights. He said, you guys are kosher. I wish Michael would know your stuff. See him in the building, you think? So, his, he said, you guys have the right to proceed forward with fixing the building. The only issue is that it may come down to a legal matter if Progressive views it wasn't worth that cost or.
We saw him, huh?
This is what our insurance guy told us.
So.
Get her done.
And, and that's what the fairgrounds is saying that, and especially our insurance guy said, where it is affecting the bathroom and we're coming into winter, it could freeze and cause more damage. He said, you need to get it fixed where it's an outside wall.
Could we back it up just a little bit on the, you said Progressive, was that the insurance company for the driver?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I do have Nathan Ottama, Ottama's number. He's the local adjuster for Progressive. He might be, he would be the one that would visually inspect that. I wonder if that would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, all I know is, uh, we, we gotta get some ball rolling shortly. Because the longer we wait, I just.
We have to throw the pipes.
Yes, and our.
Or an exhale of heat.
Brad was super helpful. That's our insurance guy. He said, you can't wait. He's like, even if you have one bid and you can, you try to get multiple bids, he's like, he's got to go with that person. And he's like, the county can pay it upfront, and if Progressive bites you on it, he's like, we'll take them before.
You think you guys have problems, you call them, yeah.
Nathan?
Yeah.
Yeah, he might. Do you have a claim number?
I just put.
We got a claim number. That's, that's the side you would want it on if that becomes complicated then.
Is this that wall just outside the girls' bathroom, women's bathroom at the event center? Yeah. Yeah, there would be pipes there.
That two, five, five, three. Well, with the date.
And I expect you drawing immediately after this.
And we'll have a creative segment. I'm gonna do this with my light panels, see if anybody knows.
Hi, Nathan, it's Garrett. How are you doing?
Hey, it's you. What can I do for you?
Good. I'm calling on behalf of the county this time. We've got a, a building that got damaged by an insurer through Progressive. I got a claim number. Is that anything that you would be interested in looking at?
Like a building?
It was a building, yeah, that got ran into, backed into.
Yeah, I don't have anything to do with the, uh, housing.
Okay.
Structures and stuff like that. I do not.
Are we, I'm gonna, I've got a claim number here. Could you give us the best contact for that?
Um, I can try. What you got?
Okay. Claim number is two, five, five, three, five, four, six, one, two, one.
Hold on, two, five, five, three, four.
Three, five, four.
Three, five, four?
Let me start over.
Two, five, five.
Three, five, four, six, one, two, one, five. Okay. Maybe they've got an adjuster assigned to it.
Weston County Vance Center, let's see if we can get it out.
Feroli, something around there.
Our chairman's been trying to contact someone on this. We might need to, we might need another contact.
So the, uh, who has he been talking to? Is it Farrell?
Yes. See, that is the one he's been trying to contact.
Okay, that's the only one I have on hand. Yeah, for a dollar.
Four, oh, two, six, oh, nine, five, four, seven, six.
That's the same number I have as well. Oh, let's see if I find anything else.
About as good as I can get him, ma'am.
Did you set a very contact? It'd be good at this point.
And then this one just said. Oh, wait.
I can tell you to her secret later.
Yeah, I'm trying to look up that file.
The situation that we have, Nathan, is we've got a building that needs repaired before harsh weather, and we're having a hard time getting it pushed through on.
You know, I can message that guy. That's about the only thing I can do.
Okay.
Um, and you say, hey, the, the county's been trying to reach out to you. And so they have a, a phone number in here, reach out to the contact. Hold on, let me find where the hell that was. So is the best number to get ahold of anybody this, uh, three, oh, seven, seven, four, six, nine, nine, oh, six?
So I didn't remember.
That's not mine.
That's the fairgrounds office.
Okay, how about this number? There's, uh, three, oh, seven, seven, four, six, five, seven, two, eight?
That's Francie.
That's Francie.
Okay, there's Billy Jackson, which is three, oh, seven, five, seven, five, eight, zero, one, one.
That's the police.
Okay, those are the two numbers it has in here, yes, to get ahold of anybody.
Uh, I, I even talked to her supervisor yesterday.
You did? And what was it?
I got nowhere.
Nathan said that he talked to, to the supervisor, and no ground has been made since then.
Okay, well, I'll message the personnel, um, and see if they can get somebody assigned to it. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll message somebody and get this hopefully going for you guys.
Okay, sooner the better. And I'm gonna give you Nathan's number also, our chairs.
Seven, four, six.
Seven, four, six.
Three, zero, five, eight.
Three, zero, five, eight.
Three, oh, seven, of course.
Okay, I will, like, get these notes in there and have somebody reach out to you, hopefully. Like I said, I can't promise anything, but, um, we can see what you can do.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks, Nathan.
Absolutely. No problem.
Bye.
In the meantime, we need to make a motion to go forward and get it fixed, don't you think?
Yeah.
Maybe what would be best is if sometime this week, say, somebody finally does reach out to me and you guys give me the go-ahead and then you contact White's and say, get on it. By Friday, if they don't, it's supposed to get chilly this weekend. I don't know.
I know what White's schedule is.
He said they could probably get the outside button up pretty fast. And that other nice thing is, he said the damage that they did, it's gonna actually, you gotta fix it in the other damage. He said he has to pull the tin all the way back from the start.
Right, and do that section.
Oh, wow.
And that's still within the twenty or?
Yeah.
That's not bad, really. That wall was.
So we don't need to come up with the money yet.
And we know what kind of work White's doing.
Right. I would feel comfortable because, because weather and things like that, I mean, it doesn't sound to me like that is an overbid job, is to give White's the approval to go ahead and get rocking on it while the insurance gets those things figured out. I mean, it might be, it might be done by the time we receive that.
We might find out they only approved fifteen thousand, and then we either stick the attorney on them or we say, I guess we'll.
Can you say?
Regardless, if any of that's gonna happen, will probably happen sooner or later. So at least our building's fixed, then the legal legality is gonna be taken care of on the backside.
The one thing, actually, they take the water pictures. If the adjuster doesn't get out there before it's all fixed, pictures are all documented, which insurance will have on them already, but.
And he did say, he said, you guys have every right to move forward if it's protecting other issues from happening. He said it's ridiculous. So if that's okay with the board, yeah.
Well, the fire board reached out and several contractors, we've only got the one bid, and we, they've done the due diligence there. I have no problem authorizing, we gotta tell White's to go ahead and fix it.
I don't need it. So I'm gonna take this leak in this moment to do this. That's why I have a problem with your contracting. That's the issue that I have. Now you're gonna wait it out for another two weeks, three weeks, six weeks, whatever.
I'm confused what you're saying.
This contract thing that Michael came to call.
You contacted Michael, so I can, you guys, you guys, for a month out, we're working on it.
Well, I didn't think he was talking about those kind of contracts.
It's exactly the contract, all of them.
I mean, I think it should be more like service contracts.
That's why we need to go through that.
Yeah, we need to define it.
Because it's all of it.
Because construction contracts, yes, if they all had go through him, then we can't really block them. And in fact, that's why we had our checklist and everything, so take that. Now, maybe if there's a warranty involved, like, like, one sprinkler is, I don't know, the elevator. Want sprinklers, I don't know, the elevator, if there's, if there's a warranty involved or like vault side, there's payments involved, then I can see, yes, he needs to, he needs to be involved, but.
Well, I can only go like this. He's not our boss. I'm sorry ma'am, we went ahead and moved and you are here to protect us, we need it.
It can be much simpler for him.
Yeah.
So I'll go. I see where he's going, but.
Yeah.
That's why I had my comment, I think that's a new job, I can do that.
I make a motion to authorize the chairman to move forward with the, the wall on the event center fixed, we use whites construction plan.
Okay, discussion. My understanding, and what the nice thing about this is they may get that exterior wall patched. And that thing can convince it for a month, probably. And they wouldn't have much money into it and until, when we might find something out from progressive too. Here in three weeks, I don't know, but.
Do we need to, um, in the event that we are paying for the whole thing?
Eighteen thousand.
Do we, do we, do you need to decide where that money's gonna come out and put that as part of the motion?
Buildings and grounds. See, whites construction is eighteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents.
There's a hundred and seventy-four thousand remaining on the grounds.
I would recommend a motion to take money out of ability grounds if insurance don't come through.
I'll second it.
We have some legal avenues to try to go down if we aren't covered completely.
In the motion, it was if insurance doesn't come through, if they do or if they don't, regardless of either direction, I'm still okay with that motion. Um, with the either legalities cleaned up or the insurance reimbursement on the backside.
All those in favor of motion, people, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Alright. Sorry, I forgot about that, I was gonna add that earlier. Um, public comment. That's the best public comment I've ever.
But spell it correctly.
Walter spoke. Walter spoke, Walter bubble.
I'll see if AI can.
Fly with eagles when you see one.
I can.
Mr. Comment, Marty?
I think I'm good.
Yeah.
I'm good.
Board, I had one thing on, we had a good discussion, I'm not gonna drag this out, don't. The bus loop turnaround. At Osage, it seemed like we kinda had some verbal there and then it just kinda, and we didn't put it back on our whole business. So I'd be interested in either putting it back on our whole business or taking some steps forward with that.
Good of that, I drove by there today and looked and nothing has happened, so.
They're getting permission.
The school's gonna come back to you guys.
They're gonna come back.
They talked to Osage Solid Way, Osage Improvement District.
So we're waiting on them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright.
I can reach out to, I'll reach out to Hannah and just.
Where you coming from?
Yeah.
Well, I've, I've had a good discussion with Sheriff's Department and Gil.
Yeah.
And brought a lot of, a lot of things up to the point. Otherwise, enjoy the fall weather.
I just wanna, Vicki sent out, I think everybody got it. She's retiring in December, thirty-eight years, so I think that's worth acknowledging and of course, we'll see her before then, but.
That takes action.
Sorry.
Vicki you're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
No, I don't get those emails.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
That's okay.
So December twenty-eighth, I think is her last day. Thirty-eight years.
It'll be interesting how they replace that.
I'm curious how they replace the hole, you know, what we.
Yeah.
Let's discuss, yeah. So, alright. Anything from anybody else? Any else need to come before the board? No.
Only once?
Yeah, there. There's two of them.
I know.